Okay, uh, welcome everybody. Um, if you're joining us via Zoom, et cetera, unfortunately you're gonna have to wait a little longer because our first order of business is to break the recess so we can head downstairs to give recognition to our Norton Youth cheer teams. Uh, so, uh, do we go down to recess or not?
Uh, no, you don't have to. No, just taking that, taking that ten minutes.
Okay, we'll be in recess about ten minutes or so. All right, can it start? It's all right, yeah? Yeah? All right. Okay, um, thank you for waiting for us. I appreciate that. Apologize for that, that delay. Okay, we're gonna start up with the pledge of allegiance. Line from our. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chairman, just as a reminder, so as a speaker, you may take your seat. Just for the purposes of interpretation and, uh, not during the meeting. Please.
Okay, uh, first up is the vote to approve the minutes of December ninth, twenty twenty-one. Has everyone had a chance to read those minutes?
Yes.
Same, do you have any objections to them or corrections?
No.
Oh, okay, uh, same no objections and no corrections. I would extend a motion to approve the minutes from December ninth, twenty twenty-one, whole session. So, second.
Second.
All those in favor, we are still going to vote on those.
Yes.
All those in favor, Mr. Sheehy? Yes. This coming?
Yes.
This scholar?
Yes.
And I'm standing as I was not at. Uh, next up is the warrants.
I've reviewed and approved the following warrants. School expense warrants, December sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, five hundred and forty-two thousand, twenty-seven dollars and three cents. Uh, January sixth, twenty twenty-two, five hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty-one cents. And school payroll warrants, December sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, one million, fifty-one thousand, fourteen dollars and thirty-nine cents. December thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, one million, forty-nine thousand, sixty-four dollars, sixty-six cents. December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, nine hundred and sixty dollars. I wish to add them into public record.
So, no objection.
Mr. Chairman, if I may just quickly, uh, just one, for the second, the president is not here tonight. Uh, she recently had a passing through family, passing through father, right, on the holidays, and she's unable to make it this time. Thank you.
Okay, um, and obviously, the, the, our school, so, personal. Um, okay, next up, we have the student representative update. Uh, do we have Malia and or Zoe?
Hi, guys.
Actually, I think Zoe is not gonna be here.
Yeah, Zoe's not here tonight, so it's just gonna be me, but that's the full update. So, um, okay.
We don't, we can, Malia, Malia, hang on one second, we can't hear you. Um.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, a little bit better, yeah.
Okay, wait, let me see if I'll try and get closer to the thing. Can, um, is this okay for you guys?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, all right, perfect, sorry about that. Um, okay, so, from the JCS and from Dr. Marcus, uh, the JCS has officially adopted the sea turtle as their school mascot. Students and families made proposals on a school-wide survey as well as writing persuasive essays, um, for students to try and reach that consensus by making strong arguments for why one animal might be better than the other. Sea turtles came out on top and they couldn't be more thrilled. Teachers have begun doing sea turtle research and art activities, and students and staff have been wearing sea turtle designs. Um, plans are being made for new connections with conservation groups, school songs, and other sea turtle-themed events. Thank you. Um, for the LGN, the students and staff of the LGN were excited to get back to school after break. They were particularly excited about the COVID dogs and sheriff's department coming to the LGN this week. The children were happy to be able to pet Hunter and watch her at work. It was truly amazing to see her sit when she got the scent of COVID. The students were also thrilled to see themselves on the knees. At the yell, Mr. Gigan said, "The only thing I would say is how I have been so impressed with our students and their ability to go with whatever we are asking them to do, whether it's wearing their mask correctly, giving space, and continuing to be respectful, responsible, and safe. They have been excellent. For our faculty and staff, I cannot say enough about them. They are incredible professionals who are doing everything in their power to be here for our students each and every day and support their students as much as possible. They are awesome. Each day has brought a unique challenge, but our educators continue to do their best no matter what. I can't thank them enough." The middle school boys and girls basketball seasons are both well underway, and both teams are putting forth amazing effort. The middle school wrestling team has made a return for the first time since the start of the pandemic. It's great for them. Um, the eighth grade representatives for student council made a visit to Norton Senior Center over the holidays to drop off homemade gift cards and, sorry, homemade gifts, cards, and treats, uh, because it was very well received and everyone involved enjoyed the experience greatly. For Norton High School, it has been a crazy transition back to school after break, but there are some cool things going on. Uh, from before break, the hallway decoration competition for Spirit Week was extremely competitive with really creative hallways for all classes. I think it was, um, the freshmen did like a jungle theme, and then the sophomores decorated their hallway, um, like Candyland. That was really cool. I liked that one. Um, and then juniors, we did like a carnival, and seniors did Star Wars, which ended up winning in the end, and they were victorious. Um, other than that, the Deco District Competition was this past Tuesday. It was switched to a virtual competition, but dozens of students still participated. Um, in observance of Martin Entertainment Day on Monday, his speech, "I Have A Dream", will be streamed in the cafeteria during lunches. And winter sports are in full swing despite COVID-related cancellations. And there is a very large gymnastics competition happening at Norton High School this weekend. Um, so, yeah, I think the only thing I can think of for the high school is just the discussion with midterms right now, which we're all thinking about, and kids are already getting excited for things like prom and stuff, which is crazy, but, um, yeah, that's pretty much all I have for you guys. If that's no questions or anything.
Thank you very much. It's good to see the sea turtle getting some love, and it's also good to see, uh, sports happening in somewhat of a local city as well, glad to hear about that. Okay, um, next up, we have the first reading of Section D, the fiscal policies revised.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, before you, um, have first reading, uh, to allow, actually, changes that you want to make, well, public and the second reading, uh, oh, uh, unlike other years, uh, policy management, annual, from MASC, it's, uh, definitely just like, uh, paid, um, what is done for purposes, uh, our last, last couple of years, we've done for purposes of ourselves. This is now coming from MASC or representative body grounded on, um, concerns around constitutional legal language, concerns around, um, legal references, which are at the bottom, uh, clarifying the process according to regulations to replace best practices, and of course, uh, clarifying regional policy distinction, because regional school districts work differently. Example, like, within Canton, regional is different from the bulk, which is different from us. So that's what you have is a packet of those under Section D fiscal management. And not have to go one by one, you can just go through the areas that you have concerns or questions about.
And so we're not beholden to, perhaps, any of these, should choose.
That is correct. You can, you can, so, which is, yeah, so, last time, what we did is we, we saw, we observed that we had upteen policies that were just written for North Public Schools that were, had some real question marks about consistency. Um, and so we went through that whole man, uh, everything, um, and made the changes, kept a couple of them with language that we thought was better for us, but eliminated this idea that everything is being born here, some policies that we created. Uh, so there are questions, um, on this, for example, there are, in my opinion, a few items here that we shouldn't, don't have to have in our policy. For example, DBJ dash one, regional school district budget transfer, that has nothing to do with us. J one, dash one, regional, that is, that's not a policy that, uh, we, we have to have and I handle it because you folks aren't on regional, so it's, it's, you know, it doesn't necessarily have to come with that. If you wanted to change some language around budget planning, what we can also do, um, is incorporate, um, and make those changes if you so choose. So it's really up to the.
So, so there's multiple regional school?
Yes.
So we can strike that home?
Yeah, the idea is that present you with the packet and say, listen, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna come forward in our second reading, those pack, those things that are aligned with us and things are both agreed. Now, if it's a regional that makes a comment about how they do something with us, that's fine to have in here because I actually have some techs. But if it's just, this is how a regional does it, then I don't think we should go there. And I'm happy to go through for you if this pulls those. I was, oh, bossing.
So, yeah, I think, I think it's right, it makes sense now. Anybody, anybody thoughts on this, any questions?
Yeah, I mean, I think even looking at the, that D J one, or, on the budget adoption, I mean, our timelines are set, for the most part, by the town, because they have our own discussions, like.
Yeah, so all it does really do.
There's not really a lot of leeway in our budget process.
No, and so the, this one for, like, the budget planning, uh, one is, it, no, it doesn't use dates, for example, it uses more of this general jargon, um, and, but then it takes things like the budget processes superintendent to school committee, school committee is the authority, right? And that's the process you should do. So it clears it up that the school committee will engage it through advanced planning, the staff, community involvement, it's actually the superintendent will do that on your behalf, bring it to you. If you have further questions, I take it back to them and so and so forth. The one time we have that cleared would be a Puma Cam or if you put it into your, into your regular meeting and you want to further, uh, input. So when I do my presentation with Matt and Jean and, and Jen, excuse me, and anyone else that comes, the fact is at the end of the day, anybody in the public, we also, it's a budget, it's a line item, then our agenda can also ask questions. So I'll go back and strike those on your behalf.
All right, so, um. No particular word of issues we need to worry. First, I guess these are, of course, but, uh, they, they make progress to school council.
Yes, so every school has a school council.
What was our school council?
Uh, not, uh, not every school building has a school council.
So that's, that's the, what's?
That is a voting body that has the right to provide a, uh, recommendation.
We call it something else?
Uh, site council. But it's the same, the, the language in the larger school councils.
Okay.
Um, it's actually not been a good process for us, um, school council because of our budgetary process. I think it's something that they need to do, like, December, December, so that they can get to us by January, so that if they say we want a librarian, at the yell full-time, they could present, they could send that up through the process as a recommendation from the site council, which also supports.
So that is, that's, that's actually something, yeah, okay.
So when, when the site council, so you guys meet with each building leader, the site council have to meet that prior to.
So what happens is they, they're supposed to have one beginning, one later in October, and every single month, typically it's May, not June, but it should be June as well, as supposed to be, and literally as a team, there are teacher representatives and our parent representatives and there's the building principal. And they sit and they discuss the changes to the student council. For example, at the high school, we're always done through the site council first, um, staff, then they come forward to you folks. So they go through that process of what you think, um, but we should be instituting a little bit more of that process to the annual budget process.
Uh, Section D B C, I, I should know this, but I think our, um, our town charter specifies when the select, well, here is the site, what was it, date, for the budget. I don't know if it is in fact, it sounded like the first, but it's not, you should, you should, I see.
That's right, so which one was that one?
It's in D B C.
D B C. Right, the deadlines, okay, so.
The select man authority to propose a date is early as December thirty-first. I should just make sure we got that.
It just says as early as December thirty-first.
We have, but I, but I think we, I think we have a, uh, a town charter.
We do, it's a, it's, it's, um, they, the budget has to be provided to the, uh, and ordered selected eight weeks prior to scheduled town meeting.
That's what you say.
That's what you say. Or you could actually, the easiest thing to do is to say, ask for the, uh, town charter of Massachusetts, because that could also change.
Uh, next year, it's not too soon. Yeah, but it should not say that something. Uh, assuming, well, I'm gonna show you the D B J.
Budget transfer authority?
Yeah, in the notes, uh, certain provisions in policy in this category may be established. I think that's supposed to be may, may to lose.
Be done.
Uh, in note, certain provisions in a policy in this category may be established. It's supposed to be may or the established.
Oh.
And then our last issue is D J purchasing.
Purchasing, sorry.
Just purchasing, it says D J purchasing. Okay. Uh, about the, about the middle, it's actually the last to remind, uh, to promote social, uh, the lead-up to this is it shall be responsibility to superintendent, calling, and the last one is to promote social and economic goals such as encouraging local, small minority, and women of this, this city, the districts purchase. Well, I, well, I think it's a very global idea. I don't, but the idea of codifying it as something as a responsibility is.
That almost sounds like soliciting directly to businesses, but it has to be, it has to.
Yeah, I'm, I'm really not that generation, like, I, I don't like that type of thing. Um, and I, and I really don't like it, again, codified as it's, it's a, it's a, it's a it's not a, you know, if, if it pleases or whatever, um, so it, it's, it's compulsory, and I, I don't like that in general, and I, I would, I would, to take that out, other people don't have a direction. Okay?
Again, well, it's no, you don't want to. Oh, yeah. No, I mean, it makes sense to, to receive, to have that be, you know, not literature, I guess, if we have, they have the option and they have.
Sure, I absolutely can get in the process for you. You can't go after, okay, that's, right, right? Okay, that's, that's all. And I, this is the first reading, right? There's no vote here.
Yeah, there's no vote, just the first reading.
Okay. Any, any other questions on it? Any, any issues or anything?
No.
No. Don't, no.
No.
Okay, all right, we're gonna move on then, uh, to the NEASC update, Mr. Golar, right?
Can you hear me? My audio off.
Yep.
Um, so thanks, I have a, just a brief presentation to share with you, just to remind everyone what NEASC is, and also to, uh, kind of take you through the, the report, um, that we just received at the end of December. Um, so, the NEASC report here is, um, the, uh, it's called, yeah, we have a, go, get away, by the way, in the middle of a meeting, sorry. Uh, um, the, uh, NEASC is the, uh, the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, and it's in charge of our decadeal, or every ten-year accreditation process. Um, the last time that Norton High School was credited was, uh, the visiting team was in, uh, May of two thousand and sixteen. Um, and then, in the interim between that and our next visit, which actually isn't until twenty twenty-eight, um, we had our two-year report, which was in October of twenty eighteen, um, and then this five-year report, which was submitted for October of twenty twenty-one. Um, and then we'll have a special follow-up report here, um, heading into our next, uh, ten-year review. And what these are, um, is a series of recommendations, um, that the NEASC provides to our school for us to take action on, and our two- and five-year and special report are just us reporting our progress on those. So our five-year report was specifically a response to the recommendations, um, from the, uh, two-year report, um, and then also the submission of some supporting documents. Um, so these documents and data and, uh, ideas were all collected from our academic coordinators, a lot of data from our administrative assistants, guidance counselors, et cetera. Um, we pulled documents from sort of redacted, uh, individual report cards to demonstrate some of the reporting on our standards, um, as well as things like, uh, faculty meeting agendas and broader data. Um, from the two-year report, there were twenty general recommendations across seven standards, um, that, you know, were very, very broad, from things like ensure that schools' core values and beliefs drive every aspect of curriculum instruction assessment, so that's something that is very, very specific, like provide teacher leadership for, uh, the guidance department. And then particularly, there are five highlighted recommendations across four of those seven standards, and those were things that we were, uh, responded to, uh, kind of directly from the two-year report that we had built in, um, to our school improvement plan and things like that. Um, just some highlighted commendations, um, from the report, uh, the strong emphasis placed on developing rigorous curriculum and assessments, as, as we've talked about actually at this body before, an ongoing process, but we continue to try to make headway into that, uh, making them rigorous and, um, aligned with standards. Um, the expansion of the staff, that's something I, I really appreciate, certainly this body and, and Dr. Biata's supporting. Um, I kind of cut off the recommendation, the full, or sorry, the commendation, the full commendations in the, um, full report, but things like special education teachers, um, guidance counselors, dean of student, um, other full-time teachers and staff have really, uh, helped both limit class sizes, um, as well as support our students. Um, some of the increase in cross-disciplinary, uh, courses that have been developed over the course of the year, um, things like forensic science, um, the reorganization of our student support team, um, definitely, uh, good credit to Amy Benner, um, the assistant principal of the high school for this, as far as putting together a multi-tiered system of support. Um, Jen Young, our NHS advisor, um, put together something that the NEASC committee was very impressed with, was our school alumni who come back to host a college day and provide, uh, sort of guidance to our juniors, um, and seniors. Um, and then also, uh, certainly, uh, something that's gonna be really important moving forward is the portrait of graduate, um, and the collaboration that took place, uh, before I arrived here in the district, sort of to develop that. Um, the reason why I really note that, um, is because the vision of a graduate is what NEASC calls it, is what our entire next accreditation process will be based on. Um, and these are some of the recommendations, um, from the report, the, uh, development implementation of a way to communicate student progress towards twenty-first century expectations. We're actually be transitioning that to the, uh, portion of a graduate, so we'll be figuring out ways, um, again, to make sure that we're reporting on individuals as well as across the schools, sort of progress towards those things. Um, again, you know, develop, continuing to work on, um, our assignments, uh, or our assessments within all departments, um, developing, implementing a, a system, um, to make sure, uh, that, excuse me, that we're, we're mentoring students, we're definitely doing that work on with our LLB, um, that's something that, uh, they were impressed with, some of the changes we made during the pandemic, and then wanting to see us carry that through, which is work that we're trying to do at the high school, um, to put in place sort of advisory-like, um, sessions within our, uh, LLB. Um, and also, um, taking a look at our schedule to make sure that it affords more opportunities for our, uh, teachers to collaborate together, um, in order to continue to develop cross disciplinary classes, as well as obviously looking at things like student data, um, and making sure that our assessments are, are common and, and collaborated on. Um, so those are things that are all kind of ongoing, um, the, the recommendations and things that I think we feel really comfortable tackling in the next two years, um, for that special report. And then finally, just to give you a little bit of a preview of, in a few years, what you'll be hearing about, um, NEASC has kind of streamlined the process, uh, in twenty sixteen, when Norton High School went through it, um, they had a system that was devised, designed on seven standards with over fifty-two indicators to respond to. Um, they have kind of streamlined that to reduce redundancy, um, and we'll be taking a look at, at five different standards, um, with thirty-four guiding principles, uh, within those standards, um, for our decadeal report coming up here in, uh, starting in twenty fifteen, um, with a self-study, and then, uh, culminating in that site visit in twenty eighteen. So, can I answer any questions from the report?
Any questions?
I don't have any.
No?
Yeah.
Glad we're correct.
Yeah.
Yes, Ethan, uh, just a, a quick follow-up. With the changes to the standards, um, do you have any idea of how we can potentially add our, some of our leader, teacher leaders, maybe yourself or Amy, others, to the NEASC list to be all with site visits? Because I think one of the things I've learned is that as those indicators change, what we, what we sometimes get, people that haven't seen them in practice before, like what you're really trying to look for when you go in at a site, um, visit, um, so I'd be fully supportive of getting those teachers that are willing to, it's probably gonna be post-COVID, um, willing to travel to any of the New England states to do an actual visit based on those principles and based upon our standards and based on, um, you know, at the high school level. So, just put it out there, if you get that opportunity, including for yourself, I think it's important.
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, to see the process from that side before going through yourself is a really good recommendation, and definitely, I think, um, you have some teachers who've done some in the past, under the old system, um, so getting them to go into the new one will be really important, too.
Michael, what can I say on the staff on the follow-up report? Being fully accredited, which is, you know, something that is kudos to the staff, administration and student, uh, going high school.
Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Go feed those kids.
It's a bad time.
Okay, uh, next up, we've got the review of the article, sewer connection.
Yes, so this requires us just to come back, uh, as you know, we pulled the article at any town meeting, uh, based on the sewer line connection going along with the athletic complex, that has become much more complicated of a situation. Uh, and so, we are going to put forward a article, uh, with a number to be determined, of course, loads of them yet, but the project, as you know, has a situation that is very quirky. Um, we consent, saw, uh, liquid cell, but not solids. We have a sewer line that is now connected in front of the school, so that's no, I mean, when the, when the high school was redone, that's not an accusation, it just wasn't there. So, the rationale here is to see if, in fact, we can get funding. Of course, the project could still come back completely underfunded and be able to do this, but it's gonna be a significant more amount of money because of the way the line is drawn. So, what happens is it goes from the high school, fully behind, to behind the yell, where actually the, uh, athletic complex will be going. We can eventually just cut those off and leave everything there, or we can clean it all out, get it all done. It won't impact the, impact the negative way, it's done all the time. But then that would mean that the yell school is independently connected to old sewers to West Main Street and same thing with the high school. And that supports the project in, or, in the sewer line, which, you know, it puts two big buildings connected to it, which is only gonna support flow, which in the end only supports all of the stuff that they have to put in to make sure that it's clean and all that other stuff. I'm not a sewer expert, although I've done more sewer connections than I ever want to do.
I was saying, it's been a couple days.
So, we recognize that this, I recognize that this could be, have a lot of questions because it may happen, but I think it's, I have to be at the deadline of the article, so I, of course, I'm meeting that deadline, you can always look for it, you can come back, yes, from now, or, um, but this should be the process that we, we, we.
Okay, are we voting on actual article or just the placeholder?
Just the placeholder at this time. So you're, you're voting on, allowing me to put a placeholder on a sewer project article, so it's a deadline product, which is, uh, I don't have any, but it's coming up.
Does anybody have, uh, objection to that or any questions?
No.
Okay, uh, then I would entertain a motion to allow Dr. Ben to, um, attach a placeholder article for a sewer connection.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Sheehy? Yes. This coming?
Yes.
This scholar?
Yes.
This is Sabasius. Okay, um, moving right along, next up, we have the update on the acceleration tutoring program.
Yes, so I believe that Mia Correa is on tonight. Is she on?
I'm here, hello, everyone. Uh, I'm. Thank you.
A little informal, if you will, and I want you to talk a little bit about what you do in your resume, and then finish up with, uh, the information I asked you to bring. So Mia, uh, the position, this position is actually a, uh, tutoring position within acceleration program that we put within the budget coming out of COVID, budget funding, so and so forth. Um, and we posted internally and we just didn't, didn't have anyone that was interested, which is fine, and so we put it out there, and this nice Portuguese lady, right, uh, which we, we don't know each other, but we know other people that, uh, we know because we come from the small world, came forward, and we really liked her, because, uh, give us a little bit about you.
Um, yep, so, I'm Mia Correa, I, um, I'm currently a high school Portuguese word, language teacher, um, at Global Learning Charter Public School in New Bedford. Um, and so I am doing, currently doing my doctor at Northeastern, and, um, working as the, um, virtual tutor, tutoring coordinator, um, for grades one through eight. Um, it's been great working with, um, the tutors, and, um, I don't know, do you want me to start talking about, a little bit about how the program has been going? Okay. All right, so the, the program started, um, just after Thanksgiving on the twenty-ninth of, uh, November. So we've had a few weeks with a few weeks in between, um, of breaks, you know, of course we had winter break, and then we took a week off coming back in, starting back up this week. We've had a total of eighteen, um, different students participate, with some of them having, um, up to eleven sessions so far, which is great. Um, obviously, we would like to see the number grow, and, and we're working on that number growing, because we have, um, nine excellent tutors available and ready to tutor, um, diverse range of, uh, grade levels and, um, content experience, as well as, um, you know, uh, experience in special education. And so, um, the program runs Monday through Friday from three PM to seven PM. Students are allowed to sign up for two, up to two 45-minute sessions per week. And there have been students that have been taking advantage of both of those sessions weekly. And so currently, the programs, again, from grades one through eight, we would love to see that expand in the future. And we're currently focusing on ELA and literacy and mathematics. We did hold a parent town hall at the starting program where we had a handful of parents participate. They asked great questions, they followed up in emails. I've had tons of parents reach out recently since I put out a new communication to teachers and it seems like teachers are really getting that information spread to parents, given the fact that I've been getting tons of emails and tweets from parents. And yeah, so we're just, we're just looking to see if we can grow the number and I'm excited to work with the teachers and the parents as well. Does anyone have any questions?
Great, thanks. One, three. And do we have, is there a typical target student or is it everybody?
It's open to any student via the student wanting to do it, the parent wanting to do it, or a teacher recommendation. And they go through Mia and then Mia helps to coordinate the whole thing online. The parents can choose the 45-minute session that's aligned to the teacher at the grade level. They can't do it with their own teacher, which is always an issue. But the nice thing about this is that you can work around that after-school schedule. I know it's virtual and sometimes we get sick of that, but what happens with the, with the physical one after school is everything to do with transportation and then what happens? So this is the child's going home, you've had dinner and you want to do a six to 6:45 literacy lesson with Mr. So-and-so, Mr. So-and-so in third grade, they line it up. We kind of knew that after the first of the year, we'd probably see an uptick, so Mia, it's great to hear that. Mia is also working on her, not only her doctorate, but also becoming a director, supervisor, administrator. So you never know if you're going to be recruiting her at the same time. And then, and then the other part is just, we really want this to work and give people that flexibility that before, before that would just be physically after school. And we just don't have, it's not even the funding, so it's just people are doing so much out right after school. Some kids, 3 o'clock is great for the ELG student, 4:15 or 4:30 is probably better just because when they get home, they can grab a snack and then. We're also thinking this is free to parents, no cost to them whatsoever, except for the time and effort of making sure that the child is getting on because we are, you know, paying a professional to be there. And then the last part is we are looking at expanding this to kind of a homework center and then expanding that to more of a, I hate to say it, but secondary model, a six to 12 model. And so I think you'll see a little bit, Mia and I will do some follow-up now because we really think that this is a model of the future, that this type of, this type of idea is a wonderful way of trying to get things done. And we wanted to also work for homework. Right now, it's all about skill sets, we want it to work for homework as well. So I think you're going to see that.
I think you guys are going to have to spread the, I think it would probably contraction for the rest of high school.
Yeah.
So that's probably a better alliance for the need to.
Right, and we also, you know, one of the things that we haven't opened it up to, but I know that this program that we, the software is, is actually, it's a five-year contract, but it's a three plus two. It's we pay X number of dollars for three years, but we have the process for five years. And basically, we are the first community in the Commonwealth to do it. But this program is actually in the city of Los Angeles, Vegas. I mean, it's in big, huge cities with 50, 60, 70,000 students. They're actually going to be coming out, I believe in February, Mia and I will coordinate something, but they're going to be coming out because they want to see other programs running, get ideas from it to make it better. Utilize her expertise now in the program on how the program is offered, easier to utilize if it's complicated, if it's got too many steps for the kids and all that stuff.
So, so the tutors are internal teachers?
Our tutors are internal teachers and we just can't, yeah. Yeah, and we have, and I have to tell you, so the Commonwealth of Massachusetts always has interesting rules, right? Because it's, it's one of those, right, because it's one of those things where, could, could, could the Norton School Committee take a vote to say for the purposes of COVID, we're in the home and supporting families, we're going to pay our whole teacher's gigantic debt, but the conflict of interest law comes into play because of you're making money. So it's, it's just, you know, these are the little things that you wish you could put aside because then like Mia and I talked about in her district as a public charter school, it's not as much of an issue, if you will, for that. So, you know, it is what it is, we're doing our best. We have eight, one public school employees, I think, one from outside currently. And if the program grows and we have to find more people, we'll put it out to our teachers again and then we'll find other teachers from outside here. We always feed our first people first, not only because of the contract language, which is important, it's an agreement between the school committee and the NTA, but because we think our teachers are great and we want them to work with kids. So we thank the teachers for it. Mia, thank you so much for taking the evening and coming out to a school committee meeting, appreciate it very much.
Oh, no problem. I know, I would just like to add, I agree, I do think I really enjoy the convenience of this program for the students. I agree, Dr. Byer, that, you know, some kids have an activity directly after school, but then they can go home and, and have this convenience, this convenient schedule. And also I think just with everything, you know, that's going on right now with COVID too, you see tons of school districts having to cancel their after-school programs to limit that face-to-face. And, and I think it's great that we have this virtual option for them.
I think it's going to, with homeworks, with the homework center approach, I think it's going to go through the roof. Just asking somebody who can be there to address an algebra two question that you're not understanding for 15 minutes will make a change.
I agree.
We'll talk soon.
Thank you.
Do you want to add? Thanks, Mia. I think that this program, oh, it's okay. I think as I was the chairperson is when COVID sort of started and I remember having.
So you're responsible for it?
No, it was really sort of a trial by fire to be the chairperson during that. But I think what we've talked a lot about was sort of, because we went very quickly into remote and then even sort of starting that next false sort of year, we were hybrid. And I think we were all so concerned about what were students losing or missing or sort of that catch-up. So I think these programs are kind of essential right now to give students, and I agreed to this, I wish it was in the high school because I think they would get a lot more. Students in the high school would really probably utilize it and get the benefit of a multitude of options for courses and for learning. But I do think it's important if we could somehow, and Joe, I don't know how this is sort of spread throughout the community, if it's just word of mouth, teachers, or I know that your email blasts are often hopeful to kind of garner more attention. I just think that families who are concerned about their children falling behind because of even just the stress of COVID, I mean, you know, I think we just have to remember we can have kids in school for, you know, the six hours a day, but that doesn't mean that they're really ready to learn at that moment. I think that there's a lot of emotional needs for children right now. And you and I talked about this just the other day, that there are studies being done right now about sort of newborns and infants who are really sort of having a delay in development because of COVID. So I think we really need to give students in Norton every opportunity to have, to have any additional 45 minutes or you said twice a week, so an hour and a half, you know, during the week. I think it's just really important that families know it there.
We agree, we're going to expand it.
So thank you, Mia.
We wanted to be, is just kind of give you a little excerpt, you know, of how it's going, but then also know that we want to grow this and, and you'll see, you'll see it in our budget presentation for next year again, that this is not just a one-time thing, it's just another way to support families, especially because we're still coming out of this COVID and especially because of the problems you just, so thanks again, Mia.
No problem, thank you.
Okay, next up, we have some discussions on the LG.
Yeah, so Principal Kathy Luke has announced her formal retirement, or resignation for the purposes of retirement, which I'm sad to see, as you probably guessed. Kathy has been a tremendous leader at the LG through some of the most difficult times, even before COVID with issues that happened at the LG with students and families and all of that. But if she wants to go on and do some other things as well as, as she says, you know, maybe come back at some point, do something, you guys are all over the others, I think, and she wants to stay in education in some way, shape, or form, but I'll let her tell you that when the time comes. So we're trying to get out early, as you can imagine. I do think using NestJet worked last time. It's not overly expensive, it's in the budget, I did budget for it because I knew a year ago that this was a very good potential, basis, discussion to be ahead. I've asked Jen to kind of oversee, we'll reach out to the committee for someone to be representing the committee round one, hosting, of course, we'll have teachers and parents and all of that, parents. And then bring me three candidates, three viable candidates, that would be, you know, the traditional form. I also think it's an opportunity for us to think outside the box about a lot of other things that the district is encompassing. And one of the things we've had some internal discussions about is how do we eventually get to an early childhood center, a K program, instead of the, what we have right now, issue of prior restructuring discussion. That's a lot, that'll work, but a lot of crossing Ts and dotting Is and a lot of motions that go into that. So we're going to have some internal discussions before we post on that. But I'm not going to be administrative, but hire somebody and a year later, I have an excellent principal that I'm no longer, is a principal, and he has to be with you somewhere, so, you know, that type. Although that mean I have a daughter, it could be that the person stays there. So I'm hoping to have some more specific answers for you, but we're going, right now, it's going to be set to establish the same order and then deal with any other changes that we make as the time comes. But I wanted to say that, I also just want to take a second, and I know we'll celebrate her later when we talk about retirees, but, you know, it's hard to take, probably one of my, my, one of my loyalty, if you will, better phrase, your sense of loyalty, things like during COVID in particular. I think Kathy has been a fantastic administrator, bringing people together. She has a fantastic staff as well, that's a lot of better staff, it's actually turning over pretty quick right now. But, you know, they, they work well together, they're always trying to solve problems together. And I think that shows that level of school, where it's 200,000 students, 60-plus staff, it's a, it's a small community, but it makes community if you're working effectively, which will be a better place in many ways. So I'm happy for her and set to see her go, you know, for those things of myself personally.
Okay, yeah, I actually, you know, it's promising utilities from my administration. I, I, I will say, I thought during COVID, she strongly is the key to that collaboration. She, she seemed to stand out as some three separate people, so, okay, I'll be doing this. So anyways, it's a big loss for us, sorry, sorry to see you go, but same time, very happy for her.
Very happy for her, yes.
I wish I could join her.
Yes. I would like to have somebody, I would say probably by no later than maybe be Captain Evil Vacation. So I'm thinking aggressively. There are tons of positions open right now, finding candidates. We know there'll be candidates that want to come here, we know that from the past round. So that's going to be a good thing, it's just finding the right match of, for that building. Right, it's all about the match and the match is about the building, it's about the central office administration that collaborates. That, that's, that's, that's.
Is she finishing up the school year though?
Yes, June 30th.
All right, any other questions or comments?
No.
Okay, we move on, February 5th, 2022 budget workshop.
We'd like to, yes, we'd like to move that actually, I think very quick, this is way too early. So we're at the 3rd of March or 12th of March, just going to see there. It's somewhat open, possible.
The 5th of the 12th, you said?
Yes. Denise is probably the calendar, she's probably.
It's a Saturday.
You know what, I can, I can tell right now that it is, it is 4:01, we're just, we can't, we're going to have to come back to you.
Okay, so when you hit the 5th and the 12th open, then you can defer to Denise and Kathleen as, as needed.
Yeah, I would probably be able to come on the 12th.
So 5th is the best thing.
But I don't, I mean, I can maybe call in if you would do that, you could.
Yeah, we do. Okay, just wanted to let you know because that was one of the things that was in the original, we came down and I just wanted to make sure you were okay with that.
Yeah, if remote is an option, then I can probably.
Remote would be an option, yes.
And maybe honestly, I want to do a scan up very quick.
Just three general statements, one, you know that the Mass, we have the right permission officer from 28th of February, we don't know what happens afterwards, but it is 28th of May. I'd like to publicly congratulate Mr. Robert Balaure, Bob Balaure, our senior students at the Yell School for being nominated for Assistant Principal with recognition from the Association of S.A.A., which is the Principal, Assistant Principal Association. So kudos to him for being recognized, he's writing to be potentially awarded that, that great recognition and congratulations to the Yell School for having such great being here. As the committee knows, there's a lot going on around COVID right now, in particular changes. I do plan on making some announces as early as, late in the pandemic, next week, about contact tracing and testing. I have had input from the Health Committee, I've had input from the Department of Health, I've had input from about 14 or 15 different colleagues, super attendants. I'm getting input from the NTA, like I always try to make sure it's part of the conversation. And so we, we're at a point right now where the resources, in particular with our school nurses, who are members of the NTA, who are working Saturdays and Sundays and weekends and nights and everything else. And we're going to use the science of the data to see if we can make some shifts that are, as we are declining in number, we can make some, what I would call reasonable shifts in the process. We're still wearing masks, not getting away from that, regardless if you like it or not, but I do think that some issues are from contact tracing, this variant in particular is, is an issue because there's so much of this transmission on regardless if you booster it or not, or if you're two shots or if you're no shots. I think the shots are probably maybe a little bit more dangerous and, and there are still deaths going on. But we, we're looking at what some other districts are doing and trying to say, okay, how does that data compare? And what's happening to our resources and shifting our resources to areas that would be much more supportive, short-term, long-term. So I don't think that I require a school committee vote because it's, it's not something that, that the Commonwealth has sent you need to vote on. So to send it back to you, I'm moving with myself out there and just whatever direction we go. The one tweak that I think we won't see a lot of change in probably be the elementary preschool because those students are not able to be vaccinated and we do have choice of not wearing that. So there is a little different process there that we might continue with the contact tracing and, and testing for those fans that have checked off and paid out this thing. So things like, I don't feel good, you go to the nurse, instead of saying, well, we vaccinated, we don't have to test you, maybe we do test and stay, if the student's positive, they go home, we start the five-day process and maybe they come back. Or they test negative and they go back to class. Or I don't really feel good, I want to go home. Okay, you know, we don't want somebody who doesn't feel good staying in school even if they test negative.
Okay, excuse me, including going home.
I'm sorry?
Will we include you going home?
Yes, yes, and we would do that also, you know, with all of our folk shows, now that our students own, also our staff. We want to, we want to send a message that this is scary, this causes anxiety, we all know that, I've been there myself. But I do think that we need to slowly continue to peel back that onion, turn it to something. See, as the numbers are coming down and as we see positive things taking place, and I will reserve my, the right to go back to full contact tracing and full testing, test and stay, get the data to show that I'm seeing some, I just think that that's the right thing. I'll use five and 10-day data. If I see after five days, things going in one direction, we will go back to that. Today, I interviewed our seventh nurse to come to work for us. Have a contract offer, whether trying to find nurses right now is impossible. But it is what it is, our nurses are heroes. My staff are all heroes, but at the forefront of what's been happening since our return this year with COVID, our nurses have, they're just, it's incredible. This morning, Doreen and I were on the phone, she just did one test and stayed, right? Which is a good thing in many ways, but let's really utilize, I'm symptomatic, I don't feel good, and utilize that process just like if you, if you had a headache in some time, I would just need to go home, I don't, I think. And utilize that process just like if you, if you had a headache in some time, I would just need to go home, I don't, I think, need to start thinking this way. Or, you know, and some of you are better than us, it's taken me a long time to get here, I have not been fast, I've been probably the only conservative stone in me has been this. But I'm ready for us to start to take baby steps and see where we are as a district and then utilize data and information. So hopefully people will be patient with me and go in that direction. And lastly, you know, there's nothing more important to me than the safety of children, schools and my staff. And so when I say this, I say it from the perspective of not only the students, but I'm saying this from the perspective of the staff. I have plenty of staff that are wanting to take off their masks, that struggle with wearing their masks, right, like the kids do. But this process is all about that process. Let's do something and see what, what happens, we have the support of the local Department of Health. We, other districts have had direct communication with the commissioner's office and just saying, why, why, why? You know, I've, I've given out fifteen hundred tests, stay, rapid tests, and less than half percent have been positive, why, why are we doing this? It doesn't make a lot of sense. So I'll get back to you and I'll communicate with you and parents, of course, I'll, as I always do, you folks, the staff, and then, such as you. That's all there is for time.
Anybody have questions on?
I just, I think it's important to note for the, the nurses just to circle back on that for a second because, you know, even though we've been able to have some sort of normalcy, what we consider this new normal, our, our nurses really haven't, right? They've been still in this COVID protocol for, you know, going on three years now and it's, it's exhausting. And I, I just, I think it's just important to, to thank them as well, that you were, yeah, I just had one other thing that I know.
Sure.
So, well, I'm just, I'm sitting here and I don't, I hope this is going to be okay to do, but I'm sitting here and because you guys are in my direct line of sight, I keep looking at Jen's
Giant mouth?
No, need a heart there. And we need to update that, same doctor Jennifer Aniel.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to congratulate you publicly. I know, yeah, yeah, I think I've been hearing what you did, not only in raising a family, but the job that you had and during COVID, it's just awesome.
And her boss, it puts a lot on her table.
For sure. Well, not only that, but dealing with your boss, it's not always easy, but the name, the name, the nameplate just keeps standing out, so I just
Well, we got to get Dan one too because we lost his, so.
We lost him.
We have no idea where it is.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you all.
And I had asked Jen the other night, when I saw her, we were together on Tuesday, if she's like been excited to sign her name and she said, I haven't had it signed yet. So I don't know if everybody knows that she's now a doctor, so at some point we'll have you sign some document, Jen.
Well, sign a check. Okay, if there's, if there's nothing else, I just would announce that next, next meeting date is Thursday, January twenty-seventh. Outside of that, if nobody has any other business, I would entertain a motion for adjournment for the night.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Shee? Yes, this is coming?
Yes.
Mrs. Yar?
Yes.
Mr. Sabasius, yes. Thank you, everybody, have a good night.